Little boy, it was, um, it was corporate experience.
Thank you, sir.
Key hopes. Um, what it was? I don't know. I didn't listen. Oh, God. It's so long. It's too long. I'm sorry. I'm hoping to find myself. Oh, excuse me. Excuse me. Oh, I'm waiting for six. I'm sorry. He said six. I was like, wait a minute, it's not six yet. At this time, our meeting is now being called to order. We appreciate all of you coming and we are opening up with an invocation. And we're happy. Okay.
Heavenly Father, we come before you this afternoon. We thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to gather here at City Hall pretending to, uh, the business of our city, of our community, and we ask you for wisdom today as we, uh, take care of the business of our city and our community and the, uh, the idea and the hope of growth and prosperity for our city, but also for the citizens of our community. We ask you for your help today. We rely upon you for your wisdom to take us beyond any of our experience, any of our knowledge or gleaning from circumstances and situations. And we thank you for it in advance and by faith. In Christ Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So once again, good, it's still morning, good evening, good morning, in between. We're so glad, afternoon, perfect word. We're so glad that you were able to join us today. We, uh, it would not be, it's not a joint council meeting and it's now just straight up, uh, not between economic development, it's just straight up city council today. And so as with that being said, the council will be the one doing the vote. My role in that, uh, in this part is that I only break ties. And so with that being said, thank you again for coming and we're just going to our meeting. And the first thing, we have recognition of visitors and then we, we don't have anyone that did comment. Did we, we have no comments from the audience. Were there any comments from the council at this point?
No.
I was supposed to remember to say something. I left it at home. I'll remember it later. Uh, and that brings us out to our business. Consider an approved election service contract with Houston County.
Mayor, Council, um, y'all have asked for a little bit more information regarding our, uh, elections contract with the county to administer our elections. Um, and we did have Ms. Cindy here. Hi, Ms. Cindy. So she's here also if y'all have any questions, but she presented us with some more information and it's in your packet and as well as a letter that is, uh, before you. But your packet also has, um, additional information with the cost breakdown of how she is able to, um, calculate the cost and, and, uh, share it with the city and other tax or other, uh, entities. Um, I also had a spreadsheet of the one that's in landscape there with the cost of what it cost the city the last time we held, um, the mayor's race with all five precincts, um, being open, um, to kind of, to kind of, um, give you an idea of what it costs to do our own. Right now, our biggest, or one of our biggest concerns, um, in doing it our own is, uh, we're competing with, uh, workers with the county. A lot of our workers are working in conjunction with the county and, um, for us to bring in that basically would include 15 additional workers plus, um, the early, uh, the ballots, uh, counting the early votes, we have to bring in, uh, two or three more, three more for that. So that's 18 people that have to be involved in this election. Um, and so we do have concerns of being able to put a, a team together. This election also, this, doing it with the county also allows us to have one joint ballot that's printed off, um, where you can vote for every measure that's within your jurisdiction and your precinct. You don't have to go to another polling place or another building or even another table. You vote all in one ballot. So it's cheaper than what we would be able to do it for and we do have some, some more information from her to show how the cost breakdown is provided. Are there questions that y'all have for her or myself or Mitzi? They're also providing, um, um, the ability to vote on a weekend. Is it, is it the weekend on a Saturday? We're gonna have a Saturday voting instead of just during the, during the week on business days.
So the overall cost, Ms. Cindy, uh, so the overall cost, I'm looking for that.
It's in the contract. Mitzi, do you remember? So it's fifty-one hundred seventy, five thousand one hundred and seventy-three.
Okay.
The, uh, I misspoke at our last meeting and I mentioned twelve thousand. That's what it costs us for the November, the special election we, we just had a few months ago. And so this is considerably less than that.
Does anyone have any other specific questions that they would like to ask?
I'll make a motion we approve the election service with Houston County.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, all in favor. Motion carries. Thank you and last ballot will alter the elections. Okay, that brings us to item number two. Consider an approved change orders for South Fifth Street, Bell Avenue, construction of storm drains and additional curb and gutter construction with funding from utility fund reserves.
Mayor and council, um, as it is when you begin construction, uh, there was, there was someone that was out there, uh, driving by, um, while we were out there working and doing some measurements, one of the local residents and, um, they had mentioned, they said, when are we getting this done? You know, it's been, it's been two or three months already. And I do one hundred percent understand that frustration, but I do wanna mention, like I mentioned, the, the gentleman was, it's been roughly 70 years, truthfully, since this construction, since nothing has taken place out here. We have lots of old infrastructure and specifically Bell and Fifth, some of our oldest portions of the city, we still had all the infrastructure for the old gas, uh, the street lanterns that worked along the street. It would be really nice if we could redo those, but we don't have the budget for that. But this is old, old infrastructure. The stormwater system that was underneath that street, it was, it was all, it was draining and functioning. Um, when we bid this project out, when we went to the two, the items that we addressed in the bid, in the bidding process, and we asked our engineers to prepare for, the things that we knew were wrong was, uh, our water system, our pipes and our street. Our street was horrible and we had lots of leaks coming up through the street, causing the, the, this repair of the streets and holes and potholes. That's what they drafted up. However, when we pulled, we started pulling the old concrete, the road was, had, had old concrete that we had paved over the top of. When we started pulling that concrete up, it was, it was a layer of protection on some of our older stormwater systems that as that protection was removed and we started mixing and, and, um, preparing the roads with big machinery, we had stormwater system under there that was clay tile and it couldn't withstand it. Uh, some of it was clay tile and some of it was old tin horn, old metal. So it was rusted, as you can imagine, and so it started collapsing. So now the stormwater, the way that street was designed to flow, where all the water would, would go down the, the gutters, drop into those inlets, and it went down to the creek on, uh, Bell. There's a creek that crosses Bell and, and travels parallel to Fourth Street. That's all blocked up and stopped because of the, uh, removal of that and the clay tile collapsing. So we went and jetted out our system and I have a printout just kind of explaining. Um, they're going to have to, from this storm inlet that you see on the right-hand side, the storm drain, um, there's another, uh, counter storm drain on the left-hand side. They're going to have to tie those two together and run a new line down Fifth Street, turn left on Bell and run it to that creek again and run all new, uh, storm drains. Um, I have a, and I do have Mr. Thurber here, our engineer, for questions if y'all have any, but I have a, a bid tabulation from, well, and it explains it on here, down at the bottom, the cost of materials for, for, uh, labor, labor for, uh, the gutters and the curbs, redoing the storm inlets, changing that up, is eleven thousand eight hundred and fifty-three. Those are items that we did not bid out yet or we, we did, we did not include in this project. And then the change order for the storm drains, they're gonna have to build new inlets, catch basins and run new, I believe, eighteen-inch pipe down this, uh, down Fifth Street and Bell. And that total is sixty-five thousand four eighty-six. Um, I think we were a little bit pleasantly surprised, even though sixty-five thousand is a sum that we weren't planning on, uh, we were expecting closer to around a hundred thousand using, um, current day pricing, uh, unit pricing. We were expecting it to be closer to a hundred thousand, but our Crockett Construction has been really good with us and they've shaved some costs trying to cover their bottom line but not tack on any, uh, numbers that they, they could probably get by with if they were, you know, bidding on this from scratch. So they want to get this project done. We wanna get the project done. Fifth Street and, uh, Bell has been under construction now for a couple of months, going on three months, and so, um, we can't in good conscience finish this up without addressing the stormwater. So part of the gutter needs to be rerun due to the way that we're gonna be rerouting the water. And as, so across Fifth Street, there's two, going to be two concrete water crossings, um, from Bell to continue that above ground and the rest of it will main, remain underground for Fifth Street. Basically, we have two options on this is either remove this from funding that we have set aside for our other street construction projects, begin deducting it off of that and, and, and lowering the, or reducing the ability
To what we're gonna be able to do.
For other street construction or pay for this out of reserves. And we do have the funds to, to pay for this, which is why we set those funds aside in the first place. We, we put that money aside for these unexpected things where we can maximize our dollars. Uh, if, you know,
Nothing.
With this amount, we're doing three hundred and six thousand dollars done.
I don't wanna take away from any other street.
That they had already, yeah, we were off, cause people are aware that we're already gonna do constructions on those streets. And so we do have funded set aside. I, yeah, I would hate to go in and cut back on what we promised, streetwise.
No, we don't wanna do that.
So our ultimate choice, our basic choice is to go with the reserve that we set aside. And so what amount will we use out of the reserve?
The total would be seventy-seven thousand three hundred and thirty-nine to include, uh, the storm drains and the curb and gutter changes.
And what do we currently have in the reserve?
Uh, about one point eight million that we've set aside.
Okay.
We've, we've been able to put aside a rainy day fund specifically for projects to put back in our infrastructure and, um...
Are we ready for a motion?
You have no, no other questions? We're ready for a motion.
Well, I move that we make a motion that we approve the change order for South Fifth Street and Bell Avenue, construction of storm drains and additional curb and gutter construction with funding from the utility fund reserves, a total of seventy-seven thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
I'll second it.
And it's been second, it's been moved in second, all in favor. Motion carries. It brings us to, um, item number three. Consider an approval resolution of the City Council of the City of Crockett, Texas, accepting and approving a termination and distribution of asset plan for the CEIDC, approving interlocal agreement with this, with the CEIDC, authorizing the preparation and the execution of all documents necessary to accomplish the CEIDC wind-up in dissolution in accordance with state law.
Mayor and council, this, um, this item was on our last agenda. We did vote for the CEIDC and I have a copy of that resolution here that was approved at our last meeting, uh, CEIDC Resolution Number RO225. Um, that in effect was the resolution where the EDC terminated itself as a corporation and handed off the management and assets to the City of Crockett. The countermeasure, the counterresolution for that was the City of Crockett to then pick up that management and the assets from the EDC that the EDC was passing off. And so that resolution did not pass at our last meeting. I have had contact with council members that have asked to bring this back up for a vote. We, we do realize that this does leave us currently without, with this having been terminated and passed off and this having not been picked up, um, current contracts are in jeopardy as well as payment of, um, existing, uh, bills and, and honoring anything, everything that we're currently under. We can't assume new obligations, but we do have considerable amount of obligations, existing obligations to, to manage and that removed our ability to do so. And so, um, that's why we did call for a special call meeting today to see if we could revisit this item.
Um, just, uh, just to, you know, let everyone know, um, on council, uh, I'm, I'm okay with, uh, you know, CEIDC closing. That's, uh, what the people chose to happen, so that's okay. But, um, I'm, I'm really disturbed with how we got to where we are today, uh, with the conversations that we've been having as a council. Um, I mean, I, I believe and I shared this with John, you know, some information was left out that was critical to some decision-making, um, on our behalf, uh, as a council. I don't know if it was left out intentionally or what, but I just don't understand because y'all, uh, the council, I wasn't here, um, my understanding has been, you know, talking about, you know, the, the building up there for, for years. I was just gonna say it like that, for years. And I knew nothing about all of the extra that was going on or anything like that until I brought myself into the knowledge. But I am, just letting you know that I know that it is our ministerial duty, cause I did read everything, I understand that. And being that we're at the point we are now, uh, had discussions with, with others, um, being that we're at the point we are now, uh, we, we're at a point of no return. So we don't have any options but to move forward with what we, what we have to do because if we don't, then we put the city, uh, in jeopardy. So that's my purpose, that's why I was, um, elected in this position. But my understanding is that if we could get all of the information so we can make sound, that's what I ask for all the time, so we can make sound decisions on, on, and have good conversa, good conversation. I mean, none of that, you did this, you did that, none of that, is that we have to come with a good, sound decision, good conversation in order to make the office to move forward. I mean, we cannot have our own separate agendas. We cannot allow social media to dictate what we do here for the city. That's not what we're up here for. So anyway, with that being said, I do make a motion that we go ahead and accept, um, and, uh, and approve the resolution of the city.
I'm sorry. Before you finish, I didn't, no, before you finish, that's what we gotta ask.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Did anybody else have any comments? Because it was still open.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I'm good with that.
Okay, and if there are no other comments, now we're ready for a motion.
Um, I do, uh, uh, I make, I motion or move that we approve the resolution of the City of Crockett, uh, Texas, accepting and approving a termination and distribution of assets plan for the CEIDC, approving an interlocal, uh, agreement with the CEIDC, authorizing the preparation and execution of all documents necessary to accomplish the CEIDC wind-up and dissolution in accordance with the state law.
Okay, is the motion on the floor? Can we get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, all in favor. Motion carries and it brings us to item number four. Consider an approved engagement agreement with Erica Neal, PLLC, for legal representation in the Woodrow J. Jones lawsuit, calls number twenty-five dash zero one five dash three.
Mayor and council, uh, we spoke with, uh, Ms. Erica at our last council meeting, requested her to provide a, a letter of engagement. Um, she has provided it and this is to, to prepare the response, um, on the Woodrow Jones lawsuit. We have, from the time it was served, we have twenty days to submit a response to the courts and, um, I have y'all the engagement letter for y'all that I sent out last week and I also have a hard copy for you. As you know, TML also denied coverage on this due to the contract. It's a breach of contract claim and that's one of the exclusions of our coverage is for breach of contract claims. And so we won't get insured, insured, uh, coverage on this, so we have to retain our
But it's, uh, but like you said, it's, it's our understanding that TML will cover the council, is that what?
No, not if it's for a breach of contract claim. In this case, TML has said that they will not cover, they will not defend us in this lawsuit since it is for a breach of contract claim.
That is due.
So they won't co, cover city council or EDC. EDC is also a TML-covered entity, but in this case, they won't cover any of their entities when it's a breach of contract claim.
When I talked to you earlier today, did, we, were we clear on that? Was I clear on that or when you and I spoke about, were we, was I?
Yeah, we spoke about it, but I, I didn't hear you say anything about TM, so TML, and I sent the letter out, they said that they won't cover the city or the count, uh, or the EDC, so I'm not sure what it was.
Cause we was talking.
That's, that's why this one here addresses both the city and the EDC is because TML, otherwise the contract would be between the attorney and TML. They would, they would assign the attorney and issue the response and we wouldn't, you know, it would be an insured coverage, but at this point, we have to retain our own defense.
So everybody is covered, uh, the EDC and, uh, and the, um, city as well?
We're a covered entity under TML, yes, ma'am, but under this lawsuit, we're not going to be covered because it's for a breach of contract claim. So they won't cover any of the lawsuit.
Okay, I just, I was trying, that's what I was trying to get understanding when you and I had, had conversations
Yes, ma'am.
About how, does that work?
Who would cover what?
Yeah, who would cover what?
Right.
Cause I was like, I was thinking, I was under impression that, cause remember you said something about in the charter that...
That's indemnification, so the city and the EDC has an obligation to indemnify their members when they're acting on behalf of the EDC or the city. So if they're acting on behalf of the EDC or the city, the members are indemnified, so we're allowed to pay for this defense, but TML will not cover us under insurance.
Uh, so how do we, um, resolve that? Is that, so bond and insurance, remember we was discussing that?
Right, they won't cover that.
So we have a bond with that, with that would have taken?
No, bond, uh, bonding, um, is when you're handling money and there's money missing or money misappro, that addresses money issues, not a lawsuit. So bonding, TML is our only other insurance coverage. Um, so at this point, it would, it would not, we won't be, we're not covered under indemni, or under the, uh, bond, under bonding or TML. We have to just retain our own defense.
And that is the agreement with Erica, I mean, that's what, with Erica right now.
And in this case, she'll agree to cover
Cover.
In the same motion, she'll cover both the city and the EDC.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Do you need to add anything? I would just ask. I knew, I told you. Okay, uh, so at this point, if nobody has any questions, can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion we approve the engagement agreement with Erica Neal.
I second.
Okay, so it's been moved in second, all in favor. Okay, motion carries and, and that more or less brings us to the end, but before we close, um, I really, we did something really happen and I was supposed to say it, but I can't. But I will say that it's, we appreciate everybody coming out in the middle of the day. We're looking forward to the election and...
United Methodist.
I'm sorry, what? United Methodist. Oh, that was, that was part of, it might have been a part of, uh, United Methodist Amish, uh, Councilwoman Katrina sat in on with us and they'll be coming to our, our city again and they'll be trying to contact people within the city to, uh, the church, they'll go through the churches. I know, I don't know if you're familiar with that youth of young, they work and they work very hard and, and they do a lot of wonderful things with the elderly, uh, and they don't do the rooftops. You're not gonna be messing with your roof on the top, but they wield, uh, things that are around. So if you know of a senior that might benefit from it, they'll be contacting the churches and they're, they're have a little application. But we're, we're so proud that the city is, is working so diligently with them and even our, um, the one that provide, uh...
Pony Woods.
Pony Woods will be working too. They work with them to provide a roll-off for all of the stuff that is to be taken out. But we, uh, they do the ramps and I think y'all are familiar with what it is and they, I hadn't realized they had been coming here that long, almost, she said thirty years? It was a really, I was a young girl then, I guess. Nobody believed that one, right? Nah, you're not gonna believe that one. But, uh, we were so proud that they came and they're, so there'll be, you'll see them around and there'll be contact and other people, uh, and they're looking, they do the volunteer work, but we appreciate it and I do, I'm glad that, I think that was what I was supposed to remind everybody of. And you know, I'd just like to compliment the council on, uh, taking care of business. That's what it's all about is, and sometimes the business is bigger than we are and so we take our personal selves off the table and we address it as a group, what's in the best interest of the city. And, and we do apologize for the inconvenience of our road construction, but it's gonna be so much better and it is, has been difficult to go around the different roads in the city. But you have to stand with your chin up and shoulders thrown back. We haven't ever had this much construction in forever and that's why we're finding so many surprises underneath it. And so this has been such a blessing and a lot of things have flown, uh, have been taken care of and even from, uh, I know we talked about the first meeting, the community meeting and we do encourage you to look at the schedule, there'll be community meetings with each of the council persons and we're looking forward to that. So you have a long time to make your list, depending on who you wanna talk, cause they are definitely the first line of defense. And so thank you all for coming and we appreciate it and we get a motion adjourned. Let's make a motion adjourned.